Yeah.
Okay, being the hour nine o'clock, call this meeting in order and have a roll call.
Hess.
Here.
Bobbit.
Here.
Light.
Here. Jenny, would you please in order to prayer, please?
Dear and the Father, thank you for this day, allowing us to gather here in your name, dear Lord. We're so thankful for the rain that you have bestowed upon our parched earth, dear Lord, that it'll soak into the crops and the soils, dear Lord, that we might have a bountiful harvest coming forward. Dear Lord, I ask that you be with us today as we make decisions that affect us in our county and our state and our nation. Dear Lord, that we will open our hearts, spill them, and listen to you to for your guidance and direction. I ask that you be with our president and all those in leadership positions, dear Lord, as they try to get their hands around some of the issues that are facing us here. Dear Lord, again, I ask that you be with them and give them some guidance and direction. I ask you to be with all of our men and women in the armed services, bring them home quickly and safely, dear Lord, as it's on my precious name. Amen.
Amen. Dean, would you please in fact, please, please?
Our present allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I acknowledge that he has been properly posted in accordance to the open meeting.
Okay, and we will acknowledge the swearing in of Commissioner Hess, District One, and Mrs. Hared for assessor that took place just a few minutes ago up in the judges.
And I have the certificate, I guess, so I call it down, so if you want to see them or I'll scan them to you all if you want.
I've got pictures.
You have pictures.
I don't know why you didn't take pictures with my camera too, you know?
Well, I'll text them to you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Consider an act on the approval of minutes for the December twenty-sixth, twenty-eighteen, and January second, twenty-nineteen, regular meetings.
Did we get the corrections to the twenty-sixth ones, ma'am?
Yeah, Max and I got the data on that.
Did you have any other things to change, Dean, any questions on that yet? I'd make a motion to approve.
I second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the motion?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Light.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay. We have two sets, does that count? Okay, can I see the signing sheet, please?
I did change it up just a little.
Did you?
Mm-hmm.
You made it upside down as well.
Yeah!
I need my little stamp.
Oh. See, I, I, you got it right there, I can do that.
Yeah, those are, you got it up there too. Somebody asked to speak.
Nope, nope. Item seven, comments and the others in the middle, item nine. Item eight, uh, A. Discuss may possible action following again to items. Item A, transfers of appropriations.
I guess not there.
Item B, transfer correction for O.S. and I, going two forty for nineteen hundred and eighty dollars reimbursement at the Highway Fund from C.B.R.I. Fund, P.O. twenty-one oh six for District Three. It was taken out of the wrong account.
It was taken out of Highway, it should have been taken out of C.B.R.I., yes.
Okay, okay, yes, gotcha, yeah, from the District Eight. Okay. I entertain a motion to approve the transfer.
So moved.
I will second that. Uh, all in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Light.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Is it just the one page, Max?
I think that's all I seen. Excuse me.
Yes, it's just one thing.
Item C, purchase orders and travel claims, motion to review.
I'd make a motion to review purchase orders and travel claims.
We have a motion.
I second.
And a second to review. All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Light.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I mean, I tried to, well, I didn't want to mess it up on this. Trying to put like, um, down here, these first things, so if I typed it, I mean, you don't have to stamp them. If I typed it on there, it's not a big deal, but.
Oh, okay.
I thought it'd be easier if you typed it on there for me and you wouldn't have to stamp it every time.
Oh, okay.
Except the purchase orders, there's no way to type it because they're a proof form.
Yeah, yes.
You might not watch these days, but I know they're long each time.
Can I just, yeah, without sign it, so? Your trucks and trailers are getting you, Max.
I know. We had a valve come apart and spread contaminants through the system.
That's what you told me.
And we changed the valve, and oh, you darn, it didn't even last a week. And it trashed that valve and got a cylinder. And we, we went out and found a aftermarket cylinder and stuff. It's two inches different from the throw on the cylinder.
Oh, yeah.
Length, but it was a third the price of a new one, so.
That's the last one.
So we went ahead and we're making it work. Dean, when you get to this one here, Highway Three, you'll have to sign, like this is a blanket, you'll have to sign down here at the bottom.
What I do.
Okay.
Yeah, whoever, if it's a blanket, whoever signs up here is supposed to sign down here.
Okay.
Once it's, once it's processed.
And that only if the amount is under what?
The one it was.
What the blanket was, yeah.
Yeah, for example, this is blanket for two hundred dollars, so it's a hundred ninety-three, so I can sign off on it. If this had been a two hundred dollars and one penny, we wouldn't have signed off on it down here.
Okay, this is, this is mileage for Cassidy, the uniforms, but they don't, they haven't the old right.
There's a state.
There's a state, there's a different name.
Yes.
But what is, like, is she having that?
Yes.
Forty-seven.
Was it in two thousand eighteen?
Yes, well, that's.
I mean, is it travel, was it two thousand?
No, 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 it was in nineteen eighteen.
Yeah, that's right. That was last year.
That was last year.
That would be last year.
Okay.
Yeah, all three of them.
Yeah.
See, the blank lets you all month, you know, every time you get your uniforms, so the whole month for the uniforms, it's paid one time, that's why it's a blanket. Because you could, if you, otherwise you'd have to get a P.O.
Yes.
Otherwise, you'd have to get a P.O. every time they got, those uniforms are every time you went and got fuel or something, but a blanket allows you to lump them together.
Has Scott checked off everything on that?
Yes, he initialed on that, is that correct?
Yes, it, yeah.
I initialed.
Okay, thank you.
You know, this one, they'll need to sign up there. There's a bunch of those on here, we need to sign up there. Thank you for sharing.
It's all right.
Well, it's gonna be late, it could be late, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Well, the other, the other ones in there have been really good, so.
They probably don't mail theirs out till like a few days before to do and then get a good time to process it through the holidays and everything else we had, we were moving things.
Yeah.
So just show you like this one right here. It's for a hundred dollars and a one hundred and fifty-seven, fifty-seven, so we just don't sign off on that, whatever. It doesn't mean it's not good, it's just that we went over the blanket.
I know, I know, we talked about that one, Dean. But as long as you have your support and documentation on that, then they're good, it's not a blanket.
You try to keep your, your P.A. trying to keep straight, your blanket's up, so if they know if you get close, then they can get another blanket or get just a single P.O. if they need to, tell a blanket can be incomer.
I'm still trying to wrap my head around all of it.
Lots to. Yeah, there's one that's a single.
Okay.
Is that the same pager service they've been using, or did they change pager services?
Well, I didn't think it, I didn't remember that.
Yeah, that's what you were talking about.
Yeah, that's.
I wonder if it's just changed names or something, because I don't so like, you know, it says critical part, so we've paid it before.
Critical, amazing, new.
Well, we've had to have paid it if it's got a, a balance to it. I'll bet it is.
It just, I think it's changed names.
Oh, she said we have them for years.
Oh.
Okay, we just didn't recognize the name, so, all right, thank you, bye-bye.
That's the last of that folder. Those two are sealed on this, in that last folder. Didn't get the coffee today?
No.
Do you need some coffee?
No.
On that girl, let that work out.
When she brings, these are ready to pick up, I mean, she bring, bring me a cup and she picks it up.
Appreciate that.
Hello, P.O.'s are about ready to pick up, and can someone bring Max a cup of coffee as well?
In that old shoe mug.
In that old shoe mug, he can't go with shoe mug.
We're getting shaped here. Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve purchase orders and travel claims.
I second.
I'm a second.
He went this over with real fast. Thank you. It's been moved and it's been seconded. All in favor?
Uh, Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Light.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item D, blanket purchase orders, we have one, uh, is for Dean Levita.
I would move to approve.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Light.
Aye.
Motion carried, blanket approved. Item E, a bid, zero-one, twenty-nineteen, phone fax quote for purchase of cement for bridges in District Two.
Uh, we went out for phone quack, uh, quotes, quacks.
Quacks.
Um, quotes, um, because our six-month bid only had one turned back in, and it was from DeLisi's uh, for ODOC Class Double A for a hundred and seventeen, and so we went out for, we called, con, sent three out, but only received one back, and it is from Enid Concrete, and it's for a hundred and ten dollars. Um, plus the mileage is the same as what the other one is, so I would move to accept the, uh, phone quack, quote from Enid Concrete for a hundred and ten dollars per yard for the. Plus the mileage is the same as what the other one is, so I would move to accept the, uh, phone quack, quote, from Enid Concrete for a hundred and ten dollars per yard for the, uh, ODOT class double A, four thousand pound plus haul.
Okay, plus hauling, do we have a second? Okay, it's been moved and it's been seconded.
Yes, thank you.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Bobbit?
Aye.
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 Motion carried, Enid Concrete. Item F, twenty nineteen zero one declaration of surplus. Now, I believe that Donna has already, had already surplus this.
We looked back and could not find it, but I'm guessing I go, don't I have any?
Donna, Donna's got documentation right here. This is it.
No, that's what she wrote up for the new one to surplus. And then I just typed it up off of that.
See, we did not have anything for disposal. We had surplus. I think Donna had surplus, uh, where, where we surplused it.
Yeah, that's just disposing.
Yeah.
Yeah, she did, but, but see, Desi and I both went and looked back, we couldn't find surplusing or disposal.
Okay, let's get.
Went back several years.
Let's get Donna on the phone, because this is an old Austin Western Packer that hasn't been used in ten or twelve years. It's set over there. It was dangerous to use the last time we used it. And, and I know Dean got wrote up and Pat did on his exit audit because it was not. And we had, we had sold it. We thought it was surplus and, and disposed of.
We called Donna and said, get the surplus, because we don't want to double surpluses, yeah, and see if she could fax over her paperwork on her surplus. We probably needed to dispose of it.
She didn't have the disposing, but she had the surplus, I thought.
She's on the, huh?
Hey Donna?
Yes?
This is Max, you're on speakerphone. Cindy and Dean and Cindy and Penny are all in here. We got, we're down to the item where we're, uh, going to surplus or in dispose of the Packer. Didn't you have the paper that showed that we surplus the Packer?
I've got it.
You've got the, you've got the paper where we surplus the Packer before, you just did not have the paperwork where we disposed of it, is that right?
I did not.
Okay, can you fax over a copy of that paper where we had it surplus?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Okay, bye.
Where's the one that faxed it to?
She probably faxed it to Desi, that is who I would say.
Donna?
Yes?
Are you faxing it to Desi?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm.
Okay, bye bye.
Bye.
Okay, and we were, well, we were looking for a roller. There were Packer, but we, we found the Packer, but we couldn't get things to match up, so anyway.
Yeah, it's an old, old Packer, years, well, fifty seven model.
Yeah, yeah, it was in nineteen, yeah, it was in nineteen ninety nine.
It might be out of the records where you don't have, it was so, so far back that it wouldn't even.
Me and me are the stuff that I was.
I was told it was District One and District Three's Packer, and Donna says it's all three of them.
Yeah, and that's what I put on the, on the disposing, that it was.
Yes, and when we got rid of the Packer, Donna went back and looked and she, she said, this is when we sold it.
Yeah, I remember when you sold it.
And then here was the brand.
You sold, you sold two Packers.
Yep, and you took, we split it and took one and then split the other, and I remember that.
Yeah, okay, well, that's, that's the reason that she spelled this out like this and, and each district got it.
Yeah, yeah, which I just typed it, since I'm Max, I think I typed it, I typed, so that, that's the same form, and then that's if she has the surplus. Hi, Donna's supposed to be faxing the surplus, can you bring it along and come through, please? Thank you, bye.
Do you want to just proceed to item H, we're waiting on that?
Yes, let's do. Uh, designation of request requisitioning officer Alexandra Britton for the Deer Creek Fire Department. Okay, here it is.
When I reviewed that, I thought it says resigning. I thought, what's going on?
Now, therefore, I'm Mike Williams, Fire Chief of the, uh, Deer Creek Fire Department, do hereby designate Alexandra Britton as the requisition officer.
Motion to approve the Alexandra Britton for the Deer Creek Fire Department for its requisitioning officer.
I'll second. It's been moved and been seconded. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Bobbit?
Aye.
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 I'm just curious, who is their receiving agents?
Uh.
Because it can't be her, can't be.
No, no, well, we, yeah.
Here, I made a copy of this, we're going to go on it.
Oh, okay, okay, we can sign in here at two, last minute.
Okay.
I need some water in my election paper, huh?
They're dry.
They're dry. Well, that's good, we got a dry election paper.
That we haven't voted on yet, that, that, that's your comping, that's not the original.
Will you stay in here while I go check?
Sure.
This one's not signed, Max, I'm gonna go see if I can find the executed.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Because I do remember that she.
Okay.
Okay, we are down to item I, publication of the twenty eighteen Grant County Employee and Officer Salary, and the last time this was presented, we had a difference in, in a, Robin Parrot's salary was different, we don't know why it, and we requested that Cindy go back and find out what the difference was, so, let's look down to here and see. Well, this is like a puzzle.
There's, there's still difference. There's still difference, there's still a difference.
Oh.
Yeah, she's, she's a fifty five three eight seven, that's supposed to be fifty five five twelve.
Yeah, fifty five five twelve, so everybody.
Yeah.
Generated by Kelpro, and if you pull it up separately, she still is the same as everybody else, um.
That's why we need to just go in there and manually change that one.
Yeah, it just needs to be manually changed, but she still is the same.
Yeah.
It's just a difference on a report.
Well, probably need to ask Kelpro why, because it makes you wonder if there's any other little oddballs in here.
I thought she was gonna go in and manually change it, but maybe it just didn't take, or you're not able to manually change it.
And Penny Dow is the big winner, because she got zero.
That's about the right. Had no salary for me, huh?
Yeah, we have no salary.
Can I leave now then?
No, you just expect twice more.
This job sometimes is not that fun.
No, you don't, you didn't, am I missing her? I don't see her, seriously.
Penny, Penny's on there, I seen Penny.
Where is she? Okay, it's not alphabetized, I got you, okay, I got you, I got you. Darn, you are on there, you gotta stay at work. Okay, so they're just here and there, I got you.
I found the commissioners, I found Dina, I found Penny.
It sounds like Roppeling. I see Penny, I see Dina, remember that?
No kidding.
I found eight.
They never said my eight.
I found eight of them, but I will tell you, I don't think that, um, I was looking at someone else's, so I don't think it's wrong.
The problems are still showing up.
Different, which is different.
Oh, yeah, I don't think that, um, because it had to do with, well, when we, okay, what it is, is it's a difference of seventy five dollars, and Alex had accidentally put longevity, more part of it is longevity, so when it's pulling that figure in on this particular field, it's not pulling her, so I've got proof that her purse is the same.
Okay, do we have time to do it, Director? Okay, would you check that one salary too, one of circled?
I know that the other officers are right.
Yeah, we, I went there, they're all, they're all, the one that we have circled.
Do you think it's more or?
I thought it was less.
Okay.
I don't know, I thought it was twenty five hundred a month, but I'm not sure.
His is twenty five hundred.
Is it? That'd be thirty two four, maybe it's thirty five. That'd be thirty three. I think it's twenty seven fifty, that'd be thirty three.
It's thirty three five, which, um, yeah, well, I don't know.
You know, I don't know.
But it'll just take me a second to fix that.
Yeah.
And yes, that was surplus.
Okay.
Here it is, right here.
Okay, very good. Yeah, yeah, we have signed it.
January seventh, so I'll, I'll make note that that's when it was surplus, right, so I'll take this bit back here.
Okay, so while she's correcting that, we can go back up to, uh, where, there's no need to do item F because it's surplus.
Already surplus, she said January F. Twenty eighteen, I think she said, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that ranges down to item G, twenty nineteen dash zero two, resolution of disposing equipment of the Austin Western five eighths ton roller, all districts. Sorry about that, I didn't get that in shut off. Okay, here we have, uh, the paperwork showing how that it was sold to Ponca Iron, and they wouldn't take it in Enid Iron and Metal, and we hauled it over to Ponca City and, and got rid of it, and that shows the division of how we divided it. There was two Packers on the truck. We took one Packer, because we didn't have separate weights on it, so we just took the one Packer, and I kept it, because it was all District Ones, and then the other one, we split three ways.
I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty nineteen dash oh two to dispose of an Austin Western three eights, uh, or five eights ton roller.
I'll second that motion. All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried, surplus. Uh, do you want to sign that?
Um, I think we need to staple those together, though, just for documentation.
Do you have a stapler?
She probably, she might scan those on the first side and then I'll do that.
Thank you. Okay, well, while she's working on I, we'll go ahead and go down to item J. Uh, designation of Grant County Representative for the Noda Board of Trustees effective January first, twenty nineteen.
Well, Max, you've served on that board for fourteen years, I think, so are you good with it?
I'm all right with it.
All right, well, I would make a motion to appoint Max. Do you have to have a first, second, and a third?
Yes, I think you do. Uh, outside of it, doesn't list this on here and stuff, designation representative, which we write in, and it doesn't have one, two, and three, but I do hope for the fact that if you have a commissioner that can't be there, another commissioner can step in and vote.
Well, I would make a motion to, uh, appoint Max Hess as, uh, the designated representative, and Cindy Bobbit as first option, and at this time, that's, I think, all we can do on that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Bobbit? Aye.
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 You need to sign down here.
I will, yeah. That's what I was getting ready to do. That good enough, damn it.
Oops, sorry.
Okay, item K, acknowledged executive proclamation by Governor Mary Fallon for a special election in county. Uh, this is filed January the second, it was a letter back from Mary Fallon. I, Mary Fallon, the governor of the state of Oklahoma, in pursuit to the authority vested in me by the provision of Sections twelve dash one 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 A, title twenty six of the Oklahoma statutes. Hereby order that a special election be held to fill a vacancy in the office of County Commissioner for District Three for Grant County. A vacancy exists due to the resignation of Commissioner Pat J. Ronk, which became effective on December thirty first, twenty eighteen. The filing period for the special election shall be February the fourth, fifth, and sixth, twenty nineteen, and the special primary election shall be held April the second, twenty nineteen, and the special general election shall be held September tenth, twenty nineteen. In the event that a special primary election is not necessary, the special general election shall be held April the second, twenty nineteen. The Secretary of the Elec, State Election Board and the Secretary of the Appropriate County Election Board are hereby directed to take all necessary, all actions necessary to conduct this election. Copies of this executive proclamation shall be distributed to them. In witness thereof, I herein to set my hand and cause the state seal of the state of Oklahoma to be affixed at Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, this second day of January twenty nineteen, by the Governor of the state of Oklahoma, Mary Fallon.
I'm going to have to acknowledge the letter from, uh, proclamation by Governor Mary Fallon for the special election for the three commissioner in Grant County.
I will second. Uh, do we need to take a roll call on that, that we acknowledge it?
Uh, yes, obviously, since I have a motion on it.
We'll take a roll call vote.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Acknowledgement is approved.
I, I don't know if you need a motion not to acknowledge it or not either, so, on that, I thought we should, just to, because it's a more of a legal, legal, this other one I don't know so much on.
Okay. Acknowledge annual notice of regularly scheduled public meetings of the Western Oklahoma Workforce Development Board Executive Committee for December twenty nineteen. Uh, there are four of them set, one of them three twenty at eleven, at King Fisher Telephone, uh, company, uh, six nineteen at eleven, at King Fisher Telephone, Pioneer Telephone, eight, uh, nine eighteen of nineteen at eleven o'clock, King Fisher Telephone, Pioneer Telephone, and twelve eighteen nineteen at eleven, for the King Fisher Pioneer Telephone office. This is just a, a board meeting that let us know they have to post that.
Pat was put on that board, I don't know if he ever attended any of the meetings, but Pat was on that board, so, I don't know if he ever attended them, because they used to meet, um, yeah, they used to meet in weather for the road board, but, you know, this is where they used to meet.
Yes.
They did help, now they've changed it.
The main site used to be Enid, uh, Octor, and I've been there at a meeting before that, and then when they put our, uh, we have board together with the out east.
Yes, right.
Or out west, then we started. together with the out east, or out west, then we started doing it, and, and that, this is the first I knew that they were doing it at King Fisher.
And two, so I think it's a change.
I do too.
Uh, cause, um.
Okay, this is the seventeen, puts this first date here.
Well, nineteen, yeah, these are telling what happened, oh, yeah.
Oh, it's nineteen.
Oh, that's gonna be the.
A teleconference. Okay, it says the board, this must be the regular meetings. Who's scheduled for, where's your job at?
This is the executive committee, but the executive committee is, they're officers.
Yes, that's the officers that meet.
So that would be their chair, vice chair, secretary, treasurer, right?
Yes.
And then the regular board is one from every county.
Right, and then.
And so that's a different time, that's what they're, and they're gonna teleconference, and you're gonna go to Woodward, Goodwell, Ponca, or Burns Flat.
Right, to go to the teleconferencing for the seventeen.
Or, well, the main site's in Union, it's still gonna be in Union.
Still gonna be Opry Votac. And then this here, the face-to-face, April the eighteenth, at Wetherford.
Yeah, and then teleconference in July.
Eighteenth, at Opry Votac.
All the same other ones.
And then, uh, teleconference, uh, October the tenth, at Opry.
Well, could we, can we table this till February when we know more about? Unless you wanna take that on, I, I know we're loaded with boards.
Yeah, I know, right.
Maybe, do they have to have that, uh, do they have to know who are designated? Okay, we've been, yeah, we can acknowledge that, but the other item M is to designate, what designate?
Well, it says for the executive committee, I'm not sure.
Oh, here's, is that the NODA?
Yeah, no, this is.
Oh, that's the Western or workforce or whatever.
So where does it say, what do they want, and that's to? We wouldn't be nominating to the executive committee, we'd just be nominating to the committee, correct, Max? Would that be right?
Right. But it says designation of executive committee member.
That's probably just because, just because of, you know, I think there was a missing, because we didn't realize there's, this is the regular, these are the, these are regularly scheduled.
Yeah, they're regularly scheduled.
And these are regularly scheduled, but these are board meetings for the workforce to, this is Oklahoma Workforce Executive Committee, and this is just the Workforce Development Board, so is this, this, you have two different notices, see? This one was received at four-thirty-three PM, this is at eleven forty-seven, these are two different notices.
Yeah, they sure are. We can acknowledge the notices.
Yeah.
But we can also table for designation.
Yeah, I think so, I think we need to table the designation at least till February ten, whatever that, February, February eleventh. Well, and the reason why is because I think we'll know more about what the District Three might be at that time. So, so if we wait till the eleventh, is that, is that what you, to acknowledge those, those?
To acknowledge, uh, L and M, and to table until February.
L, L, no, yeah, we should, we acknowledge the.
Acknowledge L and make a decision, we're gonna table it, right?
Yeah, we'll acknowledge the agenda, the postings for the, the executive and for the regular board. I think you know that, and then I'd make a motion to table the designation of the committee member for the Western Oklahoma Workforce Development Board to February eleventh, for further review.
I'll second that. Now, we're gonna do two different deals here, we're gonna acknowledge the notice which we have.
We've acknowledged that, so we did L.
And then we were going to.
I made a motion on it to table it till February eleventh for further review.
For further review, I'll have a vote on that.
Hess.
Aye.
Baldwin.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Okay. So February the eleventh, we need to make sure that that gets put back on the agenda. And would you make me a copy of them both?
Scan those to, to, yeah, to, to, scan, and she's gonna scan us that, if you want to.
I'm gonna call and make sure about that, because there are two different notices.
Yeah, they are.
And make sure that.
We don't, I don't know who our executive board is.
I don't either, I don't either.
CJ Rose.
CJ Rose is the chairman, but he's.
He, he, so he may not be.
He may not be now.
I don't know, but yeah, he was.
Okay.
I'll see him on seventeenth, I'm asking about that too.
Item N, uh, knowledge audit confirmation for lease of John Deere crackers financed through NBC for District Two. Are you buying a couple crackers?
No, uh, this is just, uh, NBC Bank is being audited, and so their auditor sent us a statement to see if what their records show agree with what our records show.
Okay.
Desi says they do agree, but they want someone to sign the document that says they agree, so I would make a motion to, uh, acknowledge the audit confirmation and to sign it, and Max is your chair, or I guess we all find me to sign it.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
I will second that.
And she said, just to sign it on the back of that.
On the back?
Yeah, I'm gonna just sign it up here, so that we don't have to scan once on everything.
I want you to take a vote.
Yes, uh, vote, uh.
Hess.
Aye.
Baldwin.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried, we're trying to acknowledge. Okay, we took care of everything up above, did we?
Oh, Stephen got that back test?
Yes, I'm gonna have to sign off on the back, you sign on the back, but.
This is the maintenance contract. Item O, the Grant County Health Department makes a contract with CDOT Communications, telephone communications.
And they're changing telephone system, they do have their quotes, three quotes there. CDOT is who they want to go with, their letter does say that that's who they, um, recommend.
Who were the three?
Um.
Okay, CDOT and, uh, E Metro Tel and C E Corp.
So it's a phone system, like, like this is our phone system, not our carrier.
Right, I think it's their phone system.
So what is the contract for them to maintain their phone system?
Okay, I was looking back, your convoy, uh.
I mean, it's three thousand some dollars is what they're spending.
For the phone, yeah, for the phone system, yeah, gotcha, got you.
And tie there, they were.
So that's, what, six, eight phones?
I don't know, they're probably getting new, I don't know if they're getting new lines, I don't know if it ever stays exactly, or does it show in the quote?
Yeah, I don't think they do.
Okay.
I mean, we can buzz in with, uh, if you want to call over there, we can sure call over and.
Pioneer and Convoy did not visit the site.
Pioneer Telephone?
Yeah, but they already, it says that they already have, this means the internet was down, was down, the health department would have no phone service. Pioneer stated they did not need to come to the site, would do away with all AT&T lines, and all maintenance would be done remotely. We were not comfortable with this technology. Uh, Convoy Communications did not visit the site and did not address a fix for the issue. Also, past experience with Convoy proved that they are unreliable to visit a site affixed to phone issues. Uh, the CDOT Communications, uh, each vendor was advised of the issues of the current system, but only CDOT came to the site promptly, assessed the situation, and addressed the issues and then planned to correct the issues. That's the reasoning that they took there. There is a thirty-dollar difference between CDOT and, and, uh, this Convoy. And then Pioneer looked like it was a lot cheaper, but it was all gonna be done remotely, that's what they said. After speaking with you and I'll be calling. Since you currently have older phone system, I have also included eight new phones for the quote. I would give you a call two days later to address the question that you may have, and that's about it. I'll give you a little chance to adapt to the meeting.
CDOT is three thousand seven hundred ninety-six seventy-five. And it can, um, one main phone is fourteen hundred dollars, five, uh, digital phones at two forty-five each. One server, one backup protector, one hundred thirty, and cable at twenty-five cents. And new phone, Jack's ten oh, Labor nine hundred. That is the same one in there? Do they have a T-1 cable, do we know a cable?
I don't know, they do.
It looks like they might have a T-1, I didn't know.
They're recommending that you go with CDOT, and you say Stephen sound, signed off on it.
Only to, was to form a.
Took them lonely.
Three thousand seven eighty-nine ninety, only like, yeah, like three dollars difference.
Three dollars, I said thirty dollars, didn't I?
Yeah, yeah, three dollars. Did you read that one? And here's Pioneer. Does the other one's have unlimited call, but that's, unlimited calling is phone service, not phone system. That's two different, are we talking, we're talking two different things on that.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense.
That's what Pioneer addressed, that they had to update their phone system, that I see is different than the other.
So they'd have to go with Pioneer rather than what they can do.
Yeah, eight new phones with the quote, to work with our solutions.
It all in all would cost more to do that.
Yeah.
So it's like their phone system only works with their phone line.
Right, whether they use their phones or not, the AD and T stuff's gonna go away.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, I mean, they wouldn't let you buy the phone system from Pioneer and put it on AD and T line.
So Pioneer is bidding, well, that'd be monthly charges, one-time charge would be six, five hundred ninety-nine dollars ninety-two cents. Their monthly, a hundred fifty-three ninety-one, that's for eight, uh, phones at a hundred forty-three each, or, that's a communication service. Here's global discount. I'm sure I understand their quote. That's more for the service than the, the, they've quoted both, they've quoted phones.
Well, I saw it over the internet.
They've, with devices, or they've quoted devices, and they've, uh, did plans.
It's a little, it's a little bit confusing when you read through that.
I think the phones, devices are one thousand thirty-nine ninety-two, I think that's what you have to compare to the, the other one. But, um, that's just phone, I know they, they've won fax lines, and I don't know if we're comparing apples to apples.
I don't either.
Call her and ask her.
Yeah, let's call her.
Ask what the difference between phones.
Clarification.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, there's a phone number on the back there, they said, or on that one page.
Darlene, for Darlene.
At the bottom, that last line.
It's five eight oh, yes, seven four eight.
Her name's Darla.
Darla, yeah, I know, I keep calling her Darlene.
Oh, Darlene Sanders.
Oh, it is Darlene?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Instead of Joanie, it's Darlene.
Darlene.
Darlene, 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 Darlene.
I'd like to figure out a representative for the board in here too, cause that was.
Yeah, that's right. And that, that CDS, CDSA in Union, he's on that block.
You leave one leave, please leave a message, thanks.
Okay, so I hear the voice now.
Yeah.
Leave if that's.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't have that, but I called back.
Oh, okay, that's. I, I just thought maybe she might have walked down home to the bathroom.
Yeah.
Just tell her in our board meeting, I had a couple questions, if she, if she had time to call us back.
And I, I have his number over in my.
Does Darlene work in this office, or does she, she's back and forth, yeah. Who, yeah, I don't know who's.
Um, Deser, no?
No, she isn't, uh-uh, yeah.
Hi Darlene, it's Cindy Pratt, um, we were in the board meeting and had a couple questions on the phone, quote things. If you get this message shortly, if you'll call back, I would appreciate it, um, thank you, bye-bye.
Well, right here it says, it's got, uh, five phones, uh, digital buttons, and on this CDOT.
Yeah, this is a twenty-four, this is one that's like a base that you get voicemails and all that on, and then they just have five, that's one, and that's fourteen hundred dollars.
Right, and you're five.
I don't know, I keep buzzing your number when you're, but will you have, maybe there's someone come over and you can run and get a business card, so we try to get ahold of somebody. Thank you, bye-bye.
Well, while you're doing that, we're gonna look at the want fire department.
Well, let's, let's get the wages deal straightened out.
Oh, yeah, did you get that one?
Yeah.
Backup check.
And what is, she would put, she put longevity, so it went into longevity, but she's, and so.
So you just went in there and hadn't, hadn't changed it?
Yeah.
And was the other one okay?
It was a hundred dollars more, because he's making twenty-eight, here's the.
Oh, my, well, where was, yeah, my paper.
Oh, there's, oh, oh, um, oh, right here, okay, yeah, okay, yeah, so, no, that's Max's.
Oh, that's all, I just, that's a work, this'll work, this'll work, yes, so, but this would've been, this would've been last year, in twenty eighteen, for calendar year, cause it would've probably been two different, you know, that was.
Right, so that's right, I go in, there's actually a report, tell her, I go in, I pull it, but it's just like what I, um.
Yeah, so he was getting.
That's where he's at now.
Yeah, that's where he is now.
Three years of retaliation.
He was this, from January to July, to June, and then July to December, but the thing is.
What it meant is one.
You, you gotta remember, there's only five months here and seven here, because we pay.
The way we pay.
The way we pay.
Now, yeah.
So you'd have to take. So that might be right, nineteen, ten, fifteen, and then. Yep, and you know what the difference is, the longevity.
Yeah.
So, and I think, and I think you do include that, there's a deal, so that would be correct, that would be correct.
Well, then that one's not right, cause I thumped it up, so, or that one, but I have it printed out in. But I have it printed out and we'll grab it real quick.
So these here.
Our grand.
So you're gonna bring us to corrected one, right?
Yes.
I'm just writing wrong on here just so I don't get confused. We'll pitch them.
Yeah, these are all.
Yeah, and then here's where all those deals came in. Or, no, that didn't get, well, in one deal, so it's just, I don't need to. We all have to shred them, give us the rest of the shred.
Okay. Thank you. It's gonna be public knowledge here.
Yeah, that's true, that's true. But those were wrong.
Right.
So the Mont Fire Department wanted me.
Okay. Down to item P, the Mont Fire Department change order number eight, eleven thousand two twenty-nine. Bid package thirteen A for four thousand three fifty, fifteen B for five thousand six hundred and seventy-nine, and sixteen A for twelve hundred. And this here, he signed off on it. Uh, owner's signature, Mr. Kebo signed off on it on the first and the third. Architect's name, Jim McKee, that's in. And they're, they're ready, they signed off, so they approved it.
Okay, so we're good to go, right?
We're good to go.
All right.
So you're gonna make a motion for that?
Yep, I was looking at where it was.
They thought.
I'd make it, I'd make a motion to approve the Mont Fire Department change order eight for eleven thousand two twenty-nine. And for item fifteen B for five thousand six hundred and seventy-nine and sixteen A for twelve hundred dollars. As requested by the Mont Fire Department.
Okay, so you got thirteen A.
Did I get them all?
Yeah.
And thirteen, oh, and thirteen A for forty-three fifty, yeah, I saw that, okay, gotcha.
And see, that's all totaling eleven thousand two twenty-nine.
Oh, is that, okay, I gotcha.
I think so, yeah.
I think.
So I think if we approve the order, change order eight.
Yeah, you're right, yeah, let me, let me change that.
Okay.
Motion. I would approve the change order number eight for a total of eleven thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars as requested by the Mont Fire Department for their bid packet thirteen A, forty-three fifty, fifteen B for fifty-six seventy-nine, and sixteen A for twelve hundred. That would be my motion.
Do I have a second? Dean, seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye?
Bobbit.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, approved. Now, I don't see on here where we sign.
Uh, ye.
Can we just sign under here?
Yep, I think, yeah, she has a whole bunch of other papers with that originally. Um, yeah, let's just sign under here.
Okay.
Put chair.
I didn't date it. Sorry.
I called up the health department.
Okay.
Todd.
They, they approved that.
Okay.
Thank you. Copy, I'll hand them down.
One is an original.
Got it.
And then we should call.
Okay.
Okay. So back up to, uh, item, uh, I. I entertain a motion to approve the, uh, employees and officers salaries publication.
I submit to approve the publication of the twenty eighteen annual salaries.
That's seconded. Been moved and it's been seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Vai.
Aye.
Is he, is he there?
They said he's in the unit.
Sorry.
But he knows me, he should very good. She thought Helen was, Helen was a teacher. And she wasn't for sure where Darlene was today.
Thank you for calling the Garfield County. Hello, this is Katie.
Hi Katie, this is Cindy Pratt. Um, we're calling from the board meeting at Grant County and we're needing to speak to Todd Blattick if he's available. Thank you.
Government Health Department, Todd, I think you're down, I'm sure.
Hi Todd, this is Cindy Pratt, you're on speakerphone. We're in the Board of County Commissioners meeting.
Yes ma'am.
Yes, Todd, Cindy, Dean and Max, that's me, are all here. Penny Dow and Cindy Pratt are here. We was wanting some clarification on this phone quotes here. Uh, we, we did give it up to our DA and he did sign off on to this as to form only. But we was wondering about, uh, you guys recommended that you go with the CDOT, uh, deal. You compared the phone systems and everything and you're, you're at ease with them?
Um, I could be, I'll see you, Miss Darlene Henderson was working on that, those quotes specifically. And, um, I've got her right here, let me get her on the line for you and she can pause there. The questions that you guys have, I know that there was question, from my understanding, the question is, is why did we choose the higher bidder? Is that possible?
Yes.
Okay, okay, and I, let's drop her real quick and then I'll let her, her speak for that.
Okay.
Hold on, thank you very much for, for your understanding. Go on, go. All right, I'm gonna put you on hold real quick and then she's gonna pick up for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Who's picking up?
Um, Darlene.
Todd, he is.
Yeah, that's, we've had it that long up to the DA, he was sick, you know, the holidays and was sick and, you know. But he's got all the.
I've got all the checks. And he's, and even when I went after and dropped out, he goes, I don't have to let you know. Can you help me, I want to talk to him. Can you stand up before, but he didn't give me a copy of it. I don't really know what he wants in the ground. Cause he had sent the first part, I mean, they don't have any order. And then I'll have to start hot, well, whatever.
We kinda got on that because we wasn't paying him.
And then now, again, I waited over ten months, we have the type of cover later.
We may not be able to wait.
I may just have to send.
Would they shut off the sheriff's phone service? Cause that would not be a good thing.
Well, and you know, it's been, he was supposed to kind of take that back, take that over, you know, once he, he said, he's a law dealer.
This is Darlene.
Yes, Darlene, this is Max S., Cindy Bobbit, Dean Vai, Cindy Pratt and Penny Dow. And we're in our commissioners meeting up here. Uh, you're on speakerphone. We got down here to your item, uh, on your phones. We, we realize that it's been taken forever, uh, to get approval of this. We got approval back of the contract for, uh, form only. Uh, we was looking through the bids and, and we just want a little clarification. You guys, uh, wanted to go with, with, uh, CDOT communications instead of the others? And we was wondering if you, with the Pioneer deal and, uh, we wondered if you guys was comparing the same apples to apples, oranges to oranges? Whether you guys were satisfied with that?
Okay, first of all, in home systems, I found out there is no comparing apples to apples and oranges to oranges. Um, did you get the, the memo that I sent with this? Uh, all these quotes in November?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and that to me, that was why I wrote that, to explain.
Okay.
Uh, the only thing Pioneer offered us was, um, the technology of where the whole system would be through the internet. And they would not even come out to the site to do anything. They would simply do away with all of the AT&T lines.
Uh-huh.
And they would set everything up through the internet. Uh, we weren't comfortable with that. When, when your internet goes down or you have trouble with your internet, which happens, well, a lot more than we'd like for it to. You would be totally without phones as well.
Right, right.
So we were not comfortable with that at all. Convey Communications didn't visit the site, and then CDOT was a little bit lower than them. Did not even visit the site to assess the issues that I told them we were having. And we do have convey communications for, uh, in our district for the Garfield County Health Department and maybe for one other. Anyway, definitely for Garfield, they have not been good at service.
Okay.
When we've had an issue with the phone, uh, it's difficult to get them out here to even, you know, uh, maintain them or check on the issue or whatnot. Uh, CDOT, uh, that gentleman Larry.
Larry Day?
Yes, Larry Day was right on the money. From the day I contacted him, I think it was the very next day, he was there in Grant County.
Okay.
He checked out the issues I complained about and one of them, um, was continual static, uh, on the phone lines. And, uh, years ago, let's see, I've been in and out of two different districts, uh, Garfield District and Woodford District. So I've been, um, you know, acquainted with Gar, uh, Grant County for a number of years and then away for a number of years and then back again. And for as long as I can remember, the office at Grant County has always had phone issues and it's just never been dealt with. Well, now we're having a fax issue and while we've been trying to get all this taken care of and quotes and everything, they have been without a fax, which has really crippled them. So when Larry Day with CDOT immediately showed up on the scene, he checked everything out from the front of that health department building to the back. Uh, he said, you know, if you have lines and, um, ports, is that what you call those things in the wall, telephone ports?
Yeah.
Jax, jax, jax.
You know, if they've been installed, uh, within the last ten years, he said, we're not gonna replace those, they don't need to be replaced. Uh, he did check the lines, he found a couple that were, I think, decayed. He said as far as cable, that would need to be replaced and one of them is to, uh, the fax.
Okay.
So that could be the issue there.
Do you guys have a T, uh, a T one line?
I believe we still are T one, yes.
Over there, okay.
Mm-hmm.
That's connected to your fax along with your phones, of course.
Well, that's definitely what supports our computer system through the state health department.
Yeah, okay, okay. Okay, well, you've answered several questions and stuff and we, we're sorry this is taking so long. This was brought to us back in November twenty-first.
Yeah. I, I did have it explained to me that by the time we got around to December, I think it was Alex, uh, explained to me there at county clerk's office that, you know, with it getting late into December or on into December things, as far as business transactions, kind of came to a halt.
Yeah.
Until after the end of the calendar year. So I just kind of resigned myself to the fact at that point that, okay, we can just forget about this till, um, till after the first, so.
Okay. We was waiting on the DA to get back with us and he got it back down to the clerk and it's to form only. But that's why we wanted a little clarification to whether you guys, uh, that was exactly what you wanted, you know? So if that and your recommendation letter here, uh, we'll staple that to that and we'll go ahead and vote on it and probably approve it and go from there.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
You are welcome. You have a good day and thanks for your time.
Darling.
Anytime.
Darling, I'll email you after the board meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks, Debbie.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay.
I understand it now, yeah. I, uh, having your phones through internet is not a good deal and we've been there, done that. So with her explanation, I believe her CDOT probably is the best bid for what they're needing over there.
Okay.
So with that, I would make a motion to accept the CDOT communication bid for new phones and phone lines for three thousand seven hundred eighty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. And to show that it, uh, due to the fact that it is a better system and support.
Okay, I do not see anywhere for us to sign.
I don't think you have to sign on, I mean.
We'll just sign.
It's got, is it, um, here's approved. I'm gonna just sign right here.
Yeah, there you go.
Just sign right there.
Good.
That's my.
And then I'll put a copy of the minutes with it. Or I guess you all sign on.
That's my motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Vai.
Aye.
Very good. Motion carried.
Now, is he gonna be here for the executive session?
Um, he can be, yes.
But he doesn't have.
No, if he's not available, but, but, but does even see if he is, it'd probably be better if he is.
Is he not in yet?
Not yet.
No, do we have any road crossing permits?
I'll bet you there's some more rare this week.
I have nine new business. Cindy, you got any new business?
I'm just wanting to acknowledge that I failed to put the payroll in.
Yes, let's do.
They have an emergency.
That is, let's do, do acknowledge that. Just to put that in the minutes, please repeat it for our viewing audience.
Yeah, seems screwed up. I admit it.
Cindy, you acknowledged that she.
Messed up, my bad, my bad.
The payroll for this meeting and we're gonna call a special.
Emergency.
Emergency meeting for nine o'clock in the morning.
Agenda has already been posted prior to.
Agenda's been posted, but let it be recorded.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Dean, do you have any new business?
Not that I know of.
Cindy?
No.
Nope, I don't have either. Brings us down to item ten, executive session for FMLA benefit for Bill Hazelwood District Three.
Uh, did you get hold of Steven?
No answer.
No answer, okay. I'd move that we go into executive session for title twenty-five, along with statute three oh, seven point B, point four to discuss, uh, Family Medical Leave Act benefits for employees Bill Hazelwood.
I'll second that motion.
You have to sign on the door?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Uh, yes?
Aye.
Bobbit?
Aye.
Vai?
Aye.
Okay, um, I'll need a piece of paper and an envelope. Thank you.
I, well, do you want, this has a bit of our HR, human resources policy, but do we want her in here to listen to this?
Yeah, that'd be fine, she's HR.
Because we might need some advice.
Okay, so your motion included that, ask her to stand.
Well, I think, you know, that's the board, we can have her leave and we can invite anybody in. So we'll have you step out.
Okay.
I'm gonna get a piece of paper.
Okay.
And an envelope and then just.
And I will get the policy.
I, I'm talking, you might want to get, if you've got anything.
Looks like we got a cable hanging down pretty low, don't we?
Yeah, it kinda got bumped, I think. Yeah, it kind of got bumped, I think.
Yeah. What do you think?
Oh, yeah, I, about what?
Well, about anything. I, this deal here, I didn't, I mean, I, I seen it was on there and stuff and...
I don't know, I don't know what Bill was up against.
Well, he's...
We'll talk about that in a little bit.
Yeah, Cindy can tell us, but he's out of time, I think, to do.
Yeah, as I said, as far as new, as far as, you know, one to come up with new business and stuff.
Let's make sure, um, I never trust these things.
No, I don't either.
So, I'm going to, I'm just going to unplug them right here. Okay, um, we've been continuing to mow and haul rock and stuff, uh, what the weather allows us to do, uh, here lately.
I'm going to lose an employee today, he's going to go back to work for K County over there. He's gonna take over the foreman's job for one of the districts over there. Really not too much going on, uh, supposed to get a load of beams, uh, off of a bridge over at Moreland, south of Moreland.
Are you?
Yes, uh, got one load of them last week, or two weeks ago, excuse me, two weeks ago, and we're getting another load of them this week.
Off of highway?
It's off of O-Dot.
Yeah.
Yes.
It was, it's not the same bridge that we got, that I got, that we got ours off of, is it? Is it the same bridge? Different bridge?
No, different bridge, yeah, different bridge.
That's great.
Yes, I think it, it's wonderful, uh, we are going to...
Is C E D gonna haul those for you?
Uh, yes, they're...
Do they, like they did, yeah?
Actually, no.
No.
Actually, we're hauling them.
Oh, you are, okay.
Personally, yes, we're sending our truck out there tomorrow, excuse me. There's a possibility of another bridge, uh, getting some beams off of, but we won't know till later, it's not, uh, done deal yet, so... But, that would be C E D, this would be on us.
Gotcha.
On us, yeah, sure enough. Outside of that, I don't have anything else. Brings us down to item fourteen, adjournment.
I move that we adjourn.
It's the new max. There's something about that chair!
I will second that. I will second that.
Okay, we've moved and seconded at, uh, eleven o'clock. To adjourn, all in favor?
Hess?
Aye.
Bobbit?
Absolutely.
Vite?
Aye.
Very good.